Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 25th Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I have a safety announcement. If an emergency should arise during the meeting, we ask that you please leave the council chambers in an orderly manner. Make a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hall and down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left-hand turn out of the council chamber, then a right down the hall and go down those stairs. If you need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. At this time, please rise so that we can do the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on Pastor Bill Reed of the Parkway Church of God to give the invocation.
Father, we come before you tonight. We thank you for your goodness, your love, your mercy, and your grace. Lord, we thank you for the blessings that have been on the city of Salisbury. Thank you, Lord, for being with our leaders during the pandemic and the challenges that they've faced. Lord, we thank you for Mayor Day and the leadership he gives to our city. Thank you for the city council and their leadership they give to the city. And, Father, we pray now for your blessings to continue to be upon the city of Salisbury. Father, we do not take your blessings for granted because we know that the blessings that we enjoy day by day come from your bounty and from your mighty hand. Lord, we pray for your guidance on this council, Lord, as they deliberate the items that will come before them tonight. Lord, we pray for your direction that you would give them for the city of Salisbury. Father, a great city that needs your direction as we go into an uncertain future. And, Father, we pray for your wisdom upon the council tonight. Lord, wisdom that far exceeds the wisdom of a man or a woman, the wisdom that comes only for God. And, Father, we will never cease to give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory for all that is done in our city. In your name we pray, and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Reed. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation.
Mr. President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Just want to say thank you to Pastor Reed and to Parkway Church of God, which my grandfather pastored many years ago. So I do have a proclamation this evening, and this acknowledges both a period of time but also an important institution in our community. It reads as follows: The mission at One Moms Battle, OMB, and the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And the FCAMC strives to increase awareness on the importance of education and training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, and post-separation abuse for all professionals working within the family court system, as well as educating judges and other family court professionals on the empirical data and research that is currently available. And research is a critical component of making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. Such research includes the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, Sonders Study, the Meyer Study, Child Custody Outcomes in Cases Involving Abuse Allegations, and the Santa Clara Law Study. And awareness and change in the family court system while honoring the over 800 children who have been killed by separating or divorcing parents is the driving force of this committee and One Moms Battle. Now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Family Court Awareness Month in our city. I encourage everyone to recognize the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. Quote, "We must protect families. We must protect children who have inalienable rights and should be loved, should be taken care of physically and mentally, and should not be brought into the world only to suffer." Indira Gandhi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, probably all of you know, on October 1st, we dedicated a friendship bridge down by the river to show our relationship and our love for our sister cities, especially Tartu in Estonia. And at that day, we had actually the State Secretary of State of Maryland. We had both of our senators here, and they were all given plaques. There was one person who did not get a plaque, and we thought it was appropriate to do that. So, Mr. Mayor, could you come up? This is probably the first and only time that the mayor has been surprised. And it says Salisbury Tartu, October 1st, 2021, presented to Mayor Jake Day in the spirit of friendship, has a picture of the bridge on it.
Thanks for surprising me.
Did you know?
I did just run out. I was also surprised.
I'm trying to figure out why you were walking that way. He didn't know what was up, but that's all right. First and only time I'll ever get him. Okay, get back to business. I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, and I heard Ms. Jackson. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The legislative agenda is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the October 4th, 2021 Work Session Minutes, October 11th, 2021 Legislative Session Minutes, and Resolution Number 3130 approving the appointment of Cody Drinkwater to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending October 2024. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The consent agenda is adopted by a vote of four to zero. Is Cody here? Is Cody Drinkwater here? I want to thank Cody for volunteering for this very important committee close to my heart, and I thank him for his service. I want to entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mrs. Miller, our procurement director, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, we'll just leave it. The Department of Procurement received two requests from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to make contractual procurement awards for two different projects. The departmental memos that we provide do give some additional details. The first is Invitation to Bid Number 21-119. It's what we call the Riverwalk Polymer Overlay. The scope of work on this was to repair spalling and other surface damage to the downtown Riverwalk via a cementous overlay. I want you to know that we did bid this twice, both in FY '21, first as a repair and replace, and then, secondly, as an overlay. And on both bidding occasions, the bids came in outstandingly over budget. We would like to then award this under Municipal Code 2.32.050.C, .5, .e, which is noncompetitive negotiation or sole source procurement. That exists whenever the Director of Procurement determines that there's only one available source for the subject of a procurement contract, and we can award the contract without competition to that source. I do believe that because we have bid it twice publicly, that we really have afforded ample opportunity for competitive bidding. And we believe this method of source selection, which would be sole source procurement, to be in the best interest of the city of Salisbury at this time, as it alleviates any further delay and does provide a substantial cost savings to the city. This would be awarded to Hyde Concrete from Pasadena, Maryland, for a total cost of $159,032.
Questions or comments?
She explained it well in the memo.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. And the second item is for, we gave it a contract number, ITB 22-102. That's for a new administration building at the zoo. This was to furnish a 24-foot by 56-foot commercial modular office complex. That does also include the concrete footing installation, block leveling and anchoring, and installing the CAT 6 data throughout the wiring throughout the building. We would like to purchase this under a cooperative contract. It's called TIPS, or the Interlocal Purchasing System. It's contract number 2009-902, their contract for permanent modular buildings. TIPS is a program implemented and administered by Region 8 of the Education Service Center. That is the lead agency for TIPS, and that was commissioned by the Texas state legislator as a public governmental entity. So in our code, actually in our charter, Section SC 16-3, .A, .9, that's the policy for competitive bidding exceptions. We can entertain a contract in which we would receive a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity, of which TIPS is. So we would like to award this to Vanguard Modular Building Systems from Fort Howard, Maryland, at a cost of $156,509. We expect this to be about a five-to-six-month lead time to actually get the building.
I only have one question. I think you said ITB 22-102. I believe it's 109.
Oh, sorry, 109. Sorry if I said 109.
Okay, just so the record is clear on that one.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I just have a comment about the administration building. It's overdue to be fixed, and I'm sure that they're going to be excited to be able to get that, and no one will step through the floor anymore. So I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The award of bids is approved by a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
We also have a couple of requests for surplus, too.
Oh, you have the surplus, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So there's actually, we got requests from Field Operations, from the Department of Field Operations and the Salisbury Fire Department. The Department of Field Operations would like to surplus. It's a trailer with a sewer camera and generator. And then the Fire Department would like to surplus three ambulance units and a Ford Crown Victoria. The first couple items, we would hopefully sell via an online auction that's open to the public. And then the last item, the Fire Department would like to donate to the Fruitland Fire Department.
Just a quick question for Mrs. Nichols. Do we have to have a motion to declare a surplus, or can we?
You already made that motion to.
But we voted, yeah, but since we voted on it already, do we have to do anything different? I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
That would be fine to.
Okay, just to amend it?
Well, you could.
Make a separate motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the surplus.
A second.
We have a motion to accept the declaration of surplus, and we have a second by Ms. Jackson. One question I have about the camera. Is that the original camera, or is that the one we just bought five years ago, six years ago? Do we know?
Let me see if the memo says anything about when we bought it.
I didn't see it in the memo. Could you just let me know if it's the, so that we can see like how many years we get out of the thing? Because I remember we had a problem with one that wasn't working, and we bought a new one.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that this is not the new one.
Well, it says the equipment tabulated below has been replaced. So I'm thinking that they're meaning this was the older one.
Okay. Could you just check?
Yeah, I'll confirm.
Yeah, just check. Not a big deal.
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll make a motion now. We'll vote on the motion to amend or to approve the surplus. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The vote is four to zero. The surplus items are approved. I want to entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2689 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda and Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan, good evening.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, members of the council. Ordinance Number 2689, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to grant a property tax credit against the city property tax imposed on certain real property owned by Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. Whereas Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. is a local nonprofit housing organization with the stated goal of bringing strength, stability, and self-reliance in partnership with families in need of decent, affordable housing. Whereas in furtherance of its goal, Habitat regularly acquires residential properties within the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, in which it performs rehabilitation and/or new construction, significantly increasing the value of such properties, and ultimately transferring such properties to families in need. Whereas the city seeks to incentivize and encourage Habitat's ongoing rehabilitation and construction of residential housing within city limits. Whereas granting Habitat a tax credit against the city property tax imposed on eligible properties will encourage Habitat to acquire properties within city limits, which will further result in positive economic and social effects, including but not limited to reducing blight and increasing the inventory of residential housing in the city. Whereas the city, through the Finance Department, shall process applications connected to the Habitat Tax Credit to ensure eligibility of a particular property for the tax credit. Whereas the mayor joins with the city council in recommending the implementation of the Habitat Tax Credit. Whereas the city's establishment of the Habitat Tax Credit hereunder is authorized by Section 9-252 of the Property Tax Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Now, therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 1, Title III of the Salisbury City Code entitled Revenue and Finance B, and hereby is amended by adding a new Chapter 3.19 titled Habitat for Humanity Tax Credit as follows: Chapter 3.19 Habitat for Humanity Tax Credit. Section 3.19.010 Habitat for Humanity Tax Credit. Subsection A. In accordance with the provisions of the Tax Property Article, Section 9-252 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, there is hereby established a city property tax credit of 100% for real property, provided that the property is owned by the Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc., with the intention of relinquishing ownership within five years from the date of acquisition. The property is used exclusively for the purposes of development, rehabilitation, and transfer to a private owner, and the property is not occupied by administrative or warehouse buildings owned by Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. Subsection B. Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. shall submit an annual report each year to the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury documenting all the real property holdings of Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. in the city of Salisbury, all transactions involving the real property holdings referenced in the above subparagraph B1. And the annual report shall be delivered to the city of Salisbury on or before July 15, and shall include all real property holdings as of the preceding June 30, and shall include the date of acquisition of each parcel of real property for which a credit is applicable on the preceding June 30. Subsection C. The tax credit for each property shall continue until such time as the property is transferred from Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. to a private owner, but in no event for more than five years. When the tax credit ceases, the property and its assessment shall be reinstated on the city of Salisbury real property tax roll at the beginning of the next fiscal year. Subsection D. The allowance of the tax credit shall be administered by the city of Salisbury Finance Department. In order to obtain the tax credit, Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, Inc. shall submit such documentation as the city of Salisbury Finance Department requires to determine the eligibility of a parcel of real property. The required documentation shall be provided upon acquisition of a property, and shall include but not be limited to a copy of the property settlement agreement. If the Finance Department makes a finding of the ineligible of a parcel for the tax credit, the Finance Department may disallow or revoke a tax credit effective as of the date of ineligible. The credit shall be allowed on and after September 1, 2021, and shall be prorated as of Habitat's date of acquisition. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 2 is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all their provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all their provisions of this ordinance shall remain, shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2689, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2689 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2690.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the council's awareness, an amendment has been made to Ordinance Number 2690, contained on Page 3, Line 3, inserting the word "November 30, 2020" into the ordinance. I will read the ordinance as amended. An ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend Chapter 17.16 of the Salisbury City Code by adding subsection 17.16.090 Nonconforming Use Zoning Exemption Program. Whereas housing studies show vacant properties create a large financial burden to jurisdictions they are located in through an increased number of calls for emergency services, city town absorb maintenance costs, and lost tax revenue as a result of decreased property values. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury desire to update the Salisbury Municipal Code to adopt a nonconforming use zoning exemption program to reduce vacant properties within the city and create additional housing opportunities. Whereas subsection 17.16.040D of the Salisbury City Code provides no building, structure, or lot where a nonconforming use has substantially ceased for a continuous period of one year, whether or not fixtures or equipment are removed, shall again be put to a nonconforming use. Whereas the city of Salisbury Housing and Community Development Department has identified a number of properties that are vacant because each individual property's nonconforming use has ceased for more than one year pursuant to subsection 17.16.040D of the Salisbury City Code. Whereas many such property owners have expressed it is not economically feasible to return their properties to single-family homes, and as a result, the properties remain vacant. Whereas implementing the nonconforming use zoning exemption program will allow such properties to continue legal nonconforming uses, which may result in positive economic and social effects, including but not limited to eliminating vacant properties and creating additional housing options in the city. Whereas the city Housing and Community Development Department therefore proposes the creation of a zoning exemption program to allow properties to regain legal nonconforming use status within strict parameters. Whereas the city, through the Housing and Community Development Department and the Department of Infrastructure and Development, shall develop an application for participation in the nonconforming use zoning exemption program. Whereas the Housing and Community Development Department and the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall review all completed applications and approve or deny participation in the nonconforming use exemption program. Whereas the procedures and criteria necessary to qualify a property owner for participation in the nonconforming use exemption program shall be codified in an amendment to Chapter 17.16 of the city of Salisbury Municipal Code. Whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 17.16 of Title 17 Zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code on September 16, 2021. Whereas the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to Section 17.16.090. Whereas the Salisbury City Council has concluded it is in the best interest of the city to allow property owners to regain legal nonconforming use status when specified criteria are met. Whereas the mayor joins with the city council in recommending the implementation of the nonconforming use exemption program and application process. Now, therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 1, Chapter 17.16 of the city of Salisbury Municipal Code entitled Nonconforming Lots, Structures, and Uses B, and hereby is amended by adding a new subsection to Chapter 17.16 titled Nonconforming Use Zoning Exemption Program as follows: Chapter 17.16.090 Nonconforming Use Zoning Exemption Program. Subsection A. Purpose: To assist in the reduction of vacant properties and provide for increased available housing within the city of Salisbury. Subsection B. Definitions: Applicant means the owner of a property who submits an application to participate in the nonconforming use zoning exemption program. Program means the nonconforming use zoning exemption program identified in this chapter. Property means a residential property subject to the nonconforming use zoning exemption program. Subsection C. Criteria for Approval Conditions: The property must have lost its nonconforming use within 60 months prior to submitting an application under the program, or the property must be vacant and the property's nonconforming use must have substantially ceased for a continuous period of one year. Subsection D. Application Requirements: All applications to participate in the program must be submitted on or before November 30, 2022. Application, excuse me, applicant shall be in good standing with the city of Salisbury. Good standing shall be defined as applicant shall not owe delinquent taxes to the city of Salisbury. Applicant shall not have outstanding code violations on any property owned by applicant within the city of Salisbury. Applicant shall not own a condemned property within the city of Salisbury unless applicant has an approved rehabilitation plan for the condemned property. Applicant shall submit an application rehabilitation plan for approval by the Housing and Community Development and Infrastructure and Development Departments. The rehabilitation plan shall include architectural renderings of the exterior and interior of the property, and shall certify that the property contains off-street and/or on-street parking of at least one space per unit. Applicant shall agree to adhere to federal, state, local, fair housing guideline practices. Applicant shall obtain all permits required to execute the rehabilitation plan, and shall comply with all applicable building codes. Subsection E. Program, excuse me, program requirements. Within 12 months from the application approval by the Housing and Community Development and Infrastructure and Development Departments, the applicant shall complete all terms and conditions of applicant's rehabilitation plan, obtain a certificate of occupancy, and the property must be inspected by the Housing and Community Development Department. The property must be made available for rent within 12 months following application approval by the Housing and Community Development and Infrastructure and Development Departments. The property shall be subject to a three-year probationary period. During the probationary period, the following additional conditions and requirements apply. All units within the property shall be subject to yearly inspection by the Housing and Community Development Department. The property owner shall maintain code and standards of livability requirements. There shall be no more than three code violations per property per year, and there shall be no more than three calls for service per unit located on the property per year. No property shall be vacant for more than a 12-month period following the completion of rehabilitation plan. Subsection F. Costs: There shall be a $500 nonrefundable application fee per property. During the three-year probationary period, applicant shall pay the following licensing costs: $240 per landlord license per year, $240 per rental unit per year. At the end of the three-year probationary period, all costs shall return to those then in effect. Subsection G. Violations: Failure to complete the probationary period shall result in the property's loss of its legal nonconforming use status pursuant to the program. Violation of any program requirement shall result in the property's loss of its legal nonconforming use status pursuant to the program. Subsection H. Appeals: The denial of any application under this chapter may be appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The appeal shall be filed in writing within 30 days of the date of the final decision or denial to the applicant. State clearly the grounds of which the appeal is based, and be processed in the manner prescribed for hearing administrative appeals under Board of Zoning Appeals Rules of Procedure. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section 2, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all their provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all their provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.
I'd like to make an amendment to Ordinance Number 2690 on Page 3, Line 3, insert "November 30, 2020." 30, 2022.
Do we have a second to the...
I second.
Ms. Jackson, seconds. And just for clarification purpose for the audience, that's as the document was read.
Correct.
All right, I'll call the amendment to the motion first. All those in favor of the amendment to approve as read, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. The motion to amend is passed by a vote of four to zero. Now I'll call the main motion. Motion to approve ordinance number 2690 as read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2690 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2691 for the second reading.
Sum of...
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan.
Prior to reading ordinance number 2691, I'll bring to the council's attention an amendment has been made to line 35 of the ordinance striking the words "Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore" with the abbreviation for the words "Wycomco County Health Department." I'll read the ordinance as amended. Ordinance number 2691, An Ordinance of the City of Salisbury Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Memorandum of Understanding with the Wycomco County Health Department in Approving a Budget Amendment of the FY 2022 General Fund Budget to Appropriate Funds Received from the Wycomco County Health Department in the Amount of $10,000. Whereas the funds have been provided by the Wycomco County Health Department in conjunction with Midshore Behavioral Health, Inc., for a Safe Station Program. Whereas Safe Station is an innovative program that helps remove barriers to treatment for members of our community who are eager to recover from a substance use disorder. Whereas the goal of Safe Station is to help people with linkage to treatment and recovery services by allowing them to practice self-determination. Whereas the city of Salisbury Fire Department will provide non-emergent medical checks to individuals that enter the Safe Station. Whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomco County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended. Whereas the accepted funds shall be used to purchase additional emergency medical supplies and equipment. Whereas both the fire chief and the mayor have recommended that the city accept the monetary donation and allocate the funds to the fire department's FY 2022 operating budget. Whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city of Salisbury. Whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomco County Health Department to accept funds in the amount of $10,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Increase general fund Wycomco County Health Department reimbursements accounts 01000-427301 by $10,000. Increase fire department expenditure medical account number 24035-546016 by $10,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 3 is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Boda.
I'd like to make an amendment to ordinance number 269 to accept it as read by Mr. Sullivan.
We have a motion to accept as read. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson, second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment to approve as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The amendment is passed by a vote of four to zero. I'll now call the main motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2691 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2691 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2692 for the first reading.
Sum of...
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2692, An Ordinance of the City of Salisbury to Establish a Program to Encourage the Expansion of Residential Housing in the City of Salisbury, known as the Housing Expansion Incentive Program. Whereas the city seeks to increase the construction and expansion of residential housing in the city of Salisbury to encourage homeownership and enhance the economic welfare of the community as a whole. Whereas the city, through the Department of Infrastructure and Development, assesses a multitude of permitting, annexation, and development assessment fees and comprehensive connection charges in connection with the construction of residential housing. Whereas the city believes a waiver of the aforementioned fees and charges will encourage expansion of residential housing, construction, and development, and accordingly has developed a Housing Expansion Incentive Program Guidelines and Application with specific requirements that shall be monitored and administered by the Department of Infrastructure and Development in order to ensure that all information and submissions are correct and properly considered. Whereas the mayor joins with the city council in recommending the implementation of the Housing Expansion Incentive Program and application process. Whereas Section 13.02.07A8 of the Salisbury Municipal Code allows the mayor and council to adopt discounts for the comprehensive connection charge to encourage water and sewage usage consistent with the city goals, and whereas the city of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development requires annexation and development assessment fees to be paid for properties being annexed into the city of Salisbury, whereas city policy requires the approval of the city council in order to waive any fee that is associated with a project not being performed directly by the city. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Title III of the Salisbury City Code, entitled Revenue and Finance, be and hereby is amended by adding a new Chapter 3.27 titled Housing Expansion Incentive Program as follows. Chapter 3.27 Housing Expansion Incentive Program. Section 3.27.010, Definitions: In this section, the following words have the following meanings indicated. Residential development means real estate development for residential purposes. Fee waivers include the following fees: Comprehensive connection charges subject to the exclusion below; Building plan review fees; Building plan permit fees; Demo residential building fee; Gas building fee; Mechanical building fee; Plumbing building fee; Annexation fees to include annexation development assessment fees; Water and sewer connection fee; Development plan review fee; Subdivision review fee; Resubdivision review fee; Critical area fees; Certificate of Compliance; Infrastructure reimbursement administrative fee; Water meter setting fee; Fire prevention fees to include basic fees, expedited fees, after-hours inspection fees; Fire permit fee to include fire, alarm, and detection systems, and sprinkler water spray, and combined sprinkler and stamp pipe systems. Fee waivers do not include critical area program fees, fee in lieu; Water and sewer infrastructure reimbursement fee; Water meter tap fee; And sewer connection fee; Any necessary reinspection fees. Section 3.26.011, Purpose: The Housing Expansion Incentive Program is hereby established for the purpose of accelerating the construction or expansion of residential development in the city of Salisbury. Section 3.26.012, Requirements of the Housing Expansion Incentive Program. Subsection A, The city hereby adopts the Housing Expansion Incentive Program Guidelines and the application submitted with this ordinance and attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, as the initial approved application, and grants administrative powers to the director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process and monitor submitted applications, to make necessary changes to the application for the Housing Expansion Incentive Program, and to adopt such additional rules and regulations as may be necessary for the proper and efficient administration of the Housing Expansion Incentive Program. Subsection C, An application for the Housing Expansion Incentive Program shall be subject to preapproval by the mayor of the city of Salisbury. Subsection D, Upon preapproval of an application for the Housing Expansion Incentive Program by the mayor of the city of Salisbury, the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall prepare Housing Expansion Incentive Program Agreement, and if the residential development is outside the city of Salisbury, an annexation petition for execution by the applicant and the city. A Housing Expansion Incentive Program Agreement shall contain the following minimum terms: Applicants shall receive fee waivers pursuant to the Housing Expansion Incentive Guidelines and application attached as Exhibit A hereto. Applicants shall pay all fees eligible for fee waivers on time and in full as the residential development progresses. Any fees paid by the applicant which are eligible for fee waivers shall be maintained by the city in a separate fee waivers escrow account. Fee waivers shall be effectuated through a refund of the amounts deemed to be waived, with such refund to be paid in a lump sum upon the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the residential development. And applicants shall adhere to the Housing Expansion Incentive Program Agreement, including but not limited to the deadlines for plan approval, commencement of construction, and issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Section 3.27.013, Authority to Bind: The mayor of the city of Salisbury is authorized to enter into a Housing Expansion Incentive Program Agreement in accordance with this Chapter 3.27. Section 3.27.014, Reporting: The mayor of the city of Salisbury shall provide a report to the city council summarizing the participation in the Housing Expansion Incentive Program, the status of approved residential development projects, and the cost to the city of Salisbury in terms of collective fee waivers. This report shall be provided within 90 days of the adoption of this ordinance, and on January 31 of each year thereafter, through the date of January 31, 2028. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, It is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2692 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2692 for the first reading is passed by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2693 for the first reading. The moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Mrs. Gregory. This is, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2693, An Ordinance of the City of Salisbury to Establish a Payment in Lieu of Taxes to Encourage Affordable Housing Development. Whereas this, there is a significant need in the city of Salisbury for quality housing units for persons with low to moderate incomes. Whereas Section 7-506.1 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland authorizes a municipality to offer a payment in lieu of taxes for properties owned by persons engaged in constructing or operating housing structures or projects, and used for a housing structure or project that is constructed or substantially rehabilitated under a federal, state, or local government program that funds construction or ensures its financing in whole or in part, or provides interest subsidy, rent subsidy, or rent supplements. Whereas in accordance with the above enabling authority, the city of Salisbury desires to offer a pilot to owners of developments eligible to receive financing through the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program of the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. Whereas to qualify for the city of Salisbury pilot, owners participating in the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program of the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development must operate an eligible development project as rental housing for low-to-moderate income households, and limit rents pursuant to the extended low-income housing covenant for low-income housing tax credits between the owner and DHCD, make no less than 60% of the housing units available to households having incomes of no more than 60% of the area median income, and continue to qualify in all respects under the provisions of Section 7-506.1 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Whereas implementing the pilot will encourage eligible owners to construct or expand the inventory of affordable housing in the city of Salisbury, whereas the mayor joins with the city council in recommending the implementation of the pilot. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Title III of the Salisbury City Code, entitled Revenue and Finance, be and hereby is amended by adding a new Chapter 3.26, entitled Payment in Lieu of Taxes as follows. Chapter 3.26 Payment in Lieu of Taxes. Section 3.26.010, Definitions: In this chapter, the following words have the following meanings indicated. Affordable housing development means a housing structure or project in the city of Salisbury that is, 1. eligible to receive financing through the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program of the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development; 2. operates as rental housing for low-to-moderate income households, and limits rents pursuant to the extended low-income housing covenant for low-income housing tax credits between the owner and DHCD; 3. makes no less than 60% of the housing units available to households having incomes of no more than 60% of the area median income; and 4. continues to qualify in all respects under the provisions of Section 7-506.1 of the Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Affordable housing unit means a dwelling within the affordable housing development that is offered for rent for residential occupancy and is made available to households having incomes of no more than 60% of the area median income. Payment in lieu of taxes means an authorized payment made by the owner of an affordable housing development instead of paying the city of Salisbury real property tax. Section 3.26.011, Requirements of Pilot Agreement: The city of Salisbury shall enter into a, excuse me, the city of Salisbury shall enter into an agreement to accept a negotiated payment in lieu of the real property tax that would otherwise be levied on an affordable housing development. Such an agreement shall consist of the following minimum terms. Subsection A, Affordable housing development shall receive a reduction of the city of Salisbury real property tax in an amount of $400 per affordable housing unit per year, the collective amount of which shall not exceed the total annual city of Salisbury real property tax assessed to the affordable housing development. The reduced amount provided for herein shall be accepted by the city of Salisbury as a payment in lieu of taxes, provided that, subsection B, the housing structure or project continues to qualify as an affordable housing development as set forth in Section 3.26.010 for a period of 40 years from the date the affordable housing development has granted a certificate of occupancy. At any time after receiving a negotiated agreement for payment in lieu of taxes, but before 40 years after receiving a certificate of occupancy, if the housing structure or project fails to meet the requirements set forth in this Section 3.26.011B, then the owner of the housing structure or project shall pay to the city of Salisbury the difference between the ordinary city real property taxes and the payment in lieu of taxes for all years from the date the housing structure or project fails to meet the requirements of the Section 3.26.011B back to the date of the initial reduction set forth in the above Section 3.26.011A, as if the property had not been granted a payment in lieu of taxes. Section 3.26.012, Authority to Bind: The mayor, excuse me, the mayor of the city of Salisbury is authorized to enter into an agreement with the owner of an affordable housing development for a payment in lieu of taxes in accordance with this Chapter 3.26. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, It is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
I just have one comment. Four of the ordinances that were about, I'm assuming the next one's going to pass. But four of the ordinances that we've passed tonight should have a definite impact on the availability of housing in the city. And I think I stated during the work session that these four are probably four of the most important pieces of legislation that I've signed. And I think it's, we're headed in the right direction, and this is, this is the first step. Mr. Mayor, would you like to add anything to that?
Mr. President, all I would add is that, you know, I appreciate, again, the commitment of council to, to making this a reality, recognizing the challenge. And then I think I'd just share that earlier today, the second quarterly meeting of real estate developers from the region, just to could share some ins- estate developers from the region just two could share some insight into what they're seeing and what they're experiencing in terms of particularly rents is something unlike our region has ever seen. So the affordability crisis continues. We're all afraid of a looming eviction and homelessness crisis, hoping that can be staved off, but the affordability crisis is upon us right now. So we've got to address it, and I appreciate all the work in getting there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2693 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2693 for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
We will now open the floor for public comments, and I have one request here. Mr. Collins Zimmerman. Collins, welcome to come to the...
You want to go first?
It's too bad Collins Zimmerman Coastal Association of Realtors and city residents...
It's too bad we can't have dramatic music playing under Mr. Sullivan's readings because it doesn't do justice to the gravitas of what he was actually saying. You know, it was a lot of words, and for anyone watching at home might not have been very riveted by it, but the truth is, it's some very important items that were just passed. And for the last 12 months, I've been talking about inventory, and I've been telling anyone I could say that we have no inventory and that we have to find ways to come up with new inventory in the city. And we're not alone. The entire country has been having that same conversation, and we've been trying to figure out how we are going to increase our housing stock. And I will say that the City of Salisbury is leading the charge in this. There's not many communities that have come together as quickly to come up with ideas on how to energize the development community, and so I congratulate you, and I really wish we could have some sort of momentous music going on, but unfortunately, we don't. All I'll say is congratulations. Thank you so much for your hard work. I know, you know, I'll talk about the residential habitat. Obviously, there's some great stuff going on there as well, but we look forward to continuing working with you and all the good things that hopefully that will come of these new ordinances.
Thank you. Thank you, Collins. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak?
I just want to thank you all. I mean, I have been talking about affordable housing and this crisis for years and the fact that you guys have just taken this bull by the horns and made an incredible impact. I can't wait to see which developers take advantage of all these opportunities and because our... Let's face it, the cost of land here compared to the rest of the state is very affordable, and there's no reason why even local developers don't take advantage of this so that those rents stay local. And I'm also pleased to say, I can't go into a lot of details yet, but we, Habitat for Humanity of Wycomico County, we made an offer on six homes today that are currently rental properties, and we are going to close on those, I hope by January 15, and turn those six homes into owner-occupied properties in the church street neighborhood. So we're super excited, and we're looking forward to more opportunities for investors that are looking to retire so that we can make homeownership a reality for those that desire it and deserve it. So, thank you again.
Great. Great news. Thank you. No... Anyone else? Mr. Mayor?
The only thing that I would add to what I already said was is that in today's discussions, one of the topics that came up was that there is still middle-income workforce housing that is increasingly scarce. So I think what's been done tonight and what will be done in two weeks to... Once this legislation is read a second time, passed into law, assuming that happens, I think we've done a lot for affordable housing. We will have done a lot to address the supply issues, but there will be increasing need for other tools and mechanisms, so we just need to pay attention to that. And just as we have with this package of legislation, be nimble, be responsive to the changing reality on the ground. And so I would just say, expect that we'll continue to find the right tools to solve the problem in this and many other fronts. But with that, I just want to say thank you one more time.
Ms. Glanz?
Mr. President, just an update on the camera question. It's 2016 model, so about six years, so...
So that was the one? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Boda?
Speaking of housing, if you're looking for a house, 617 Decatur Avenue is for sale, and the city is paving the street this week, so not only would you get a great house, your councilman as your neighbor, but you would get a brand-new street. So just wanted to share that.
That sounds a little self-serving, but that's okay. We'll let you have it. Yes, I agree that it needed to be paved.
Yeah, it did.
No pressure. Ms. Jackson?
All I can say this evening is love one another. Continue to love. I've lost several family members in three weeks. One buried one Saturday and lost another one Saturday. And I guess tonight, everybody wonders why I'm so... I'm not me tonight. But continue to love one another. Show your love. Give your love, because when you lose people that are close to you, it hurts. Even this morning, I found out I lost a very close friend, very close friend, 57 years Do not take life for granted. Do not take people for granted. Love people. Love them with your whole heart, your whole heart. I try my best to love people, and I love hard. Don't take it for granted. COVID is here. Many people have passed from COVID. Many people have passed from several things, but when you're constantly losing people in your life that mean the most to you, it hurts, and I'm hurting today. I'm hurting. I'm hurting.
You're April. Michelle?
So sorry, April. I just want to say, you know, like she said, COVID is still here. Booster shots have been approved. You can mix and match, so you don't have to get a booster from the same thing that you originally... The same shot you originally got, so please go get your booster. If you've not already gotten the vaccine, please go get it. Please, please, please. You know, and please be safe for Halloween. Look out for the little ones this weekend coming up. There's a Halloween party at Poplar Hill Mansion Friday evening. I know that there's going to be some trick-or-treating downtown, so please look out for the little ones that are out there.
Thank you, Michelle. Since Ms. Blake is not here today, I would like to always say, as I do, that our blood supply, if you're able to give blood, we fell below one day's need once this past week. So please, if you are able to, please donate blood, and I'm encouraging all my kids to do it as well, but it's needed greatly. And be kind to one another. At this time, we are going to adjourn and to discuss a matter directly related, a closed session after this is adjourned, and to discuss a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid proposal if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland 3-305B14. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda and Mrs. Gregory seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. We are now entered in a closed session. We thank everyone for coming. We will... After closed session is finished, we will close, come back to public session, and then close. So we ask everyone, please, to leave the... Leave the council. All right? We've just... The council has just come out of closed session to discuss a negotiating strategy relative to a potential sale. If there's no other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Do you have something?
Oh, yeah. I forgot to mention earlier that State of the City is tomorrow night, so that's my annual report to the council. So that's tomorrow at Revival at 6:30?
6:30.
6:30. Revival in the city center at 6:30.
Perfect.
Revival being the new performing arts space in downtown, which has a full menu and bar.
Third floor?
Third floor.
Third floor. Third floor of the city center tomorrow night.
Just putting it out there.
Okay. We are adjourned, everybody. Thank you.
I might need a...